Good evening.
Counselor Reed.
Good boy, thank you.
I'm in favor.
Jeff, for you?
I'm in favor.
All in favor? Sorry, Counselor Reed, I'm still moving. I'm going to ask Jeff to respond to the ECT development situation. Jeff, go ahead.
We're just kind of starting to talk budget and put our list together and I just, I wanted to get some feedback from council on this economic development position. So, the economic development officer position isn't a position we've had as a standalone permanent position with the town in recent history. If you go back a while, there was a three or four years there, I think, where somebody was doing it, but it's been something that's normally coupled with other positions. So Marion carried it for a lot of years and I carried it for a few years and now we're not, we don't have anyone designated for that position. Many of you will recall, we proposed to the county last year for, in the shared services review, for a shared economic development position under the ACP grant to fund it. We were turned down. The county declined to partner with us on that, or anything for that matter, but that's another story. Declined to partner with us on that and the time to apply for ACP has passed. It's fully subscribed and is closed until next fiscal year. So I just wanted to get some feel for council about where we may want to go with this. I put forward four potential options to consider, although I think the first two would probably get turned down quite quickly, but the first is to ask the county formally to create a regional position and then we would financially participate. So whatever they felt our equitable share should be, we would ask them to create that, we would participate, which is essentially what we did ask in the shared services model. The second one is that we would hire a position if the county would participate financially. I would also suggest I wouldn't hold out for that to happen either, but the third is that we hire a position solely for the town on, say, a .5 or, you know, a part-time basis, but that the activities of that person would be solely for the town, which the ramifications, in my opinion, if we did that, would be we would change the structure of our committee, which would no longer have county representation. That would be one of the ramifications in my mind for that. Or fourth is, right now, we don't do anything. We wait and see if the ACP grant is refunded and apply and then petition the county to partner with us again next spring. There's a lot of ifs there. I have no idea, one, if it'll get refunded, and two, if the county will want to participate. I don't know, but that's an option we can wait and see. And I put some corresponding potential costs. I also put the portion of the shared services proposal to the county that Harold John's room did in your background, and then just the committee makeup as it sits right now. So I'd just like a little feedback on where you, as a council, think we may want to go with it. I'm relatively comfortable with any of those options. We have counselors and administration participating on regional initiatives with the two Rita's right now, so we do expend funds and time and energy with those regional partnerships between Mormon Trail, Alberta Southwest, and South Grove. So it's not as though the ball has been fully dropped here. I still participate on things where I need to with Linda Erickson and other economic development officers regionally. Anything that comes in front of me that I can deal with right away in my current position, I still do and that's fine, but if we want to look at a different approach to it, then I'd like to have some of that discussion now as we start looking at budget. And we're not under the gun here terribly, we have time, but it's been on my mind for a while, so I thought I'd put some options out there for discussion.
Jeff, I really like the number four option, where we look at the ACP grant coming back and then petition the county to go with this. Go ahead.
I was kind of leaning towards that too, but I wanted to get a little background on reasoning for the county. Did they give you any reason why they would not participate or they just flat said, "We're not interested. We don't need it."
Sort of.
Motion to file.
Yeah, actually, I hate to say, that's exactly what it was. There was no discussion about it at the council table.
They're usually not interested.
You can watch their meeting and they didn't entertain any of the proposals for even a minute.
If you consider what they're saying, what we're saying then to them, they've got Glenwood, Hillspring, Mountain View, La Brasse, Carstens, all in this area, and it would be to their advantage to have one regional development officer. And I think it would look very good on our grant, too. But Mayor, Mayor Corona?
Is to go along the same line. What I'm wondering, when I filed it, was it to file it forever? Or I had the feeling it was to be filed and to be brought back in a fall?
Correct. So the letter we received basically said, "Thank you, we're going to need to, we've already done budget, we can't look at it for now, we'll look at it in the fall." So I sent that letter just two days ago back to Murray and said, "Murray, I had this calendar and I trust it'll be on an upcoming agenda."
Yeah, so this-
So I've left it there. To Counselor Barnes's question, I did have a county counselor come and ask me what we were doing with the position, and I said, "We proposed something and you turned us down."
Right.
Like we had a proposal and you declined it. And he suggested I come back to their council and try and sell them on it, to which I said, "No, it's highly inappropriate. If you guys feel it's a priority, then pitter-patter and do it already," but I don't see that happening. But I did request that the county, I sent a copy of the letter to Murray on, probably it was Friday, I guess, last Friday, and asked him to readdress it as per the letter.
And, sorry, if I may follow up. I think then, before we used item four as our last resort, which is the wisest financially, if we had a sense that the county is willing to readdress that position as we had presented it in a shared service review, then one might be something we need to look at, but unless we have their answers, it's difficult to make a decision.
Mayor Corona? As I watched on YouTube the county council's meetings, I have yet to see, in all honesty, when they make a motion to file, if something comes back on the table.
Well, it's the letters that sent hers, that gave me a little bit of hope, because in that letter, if I recall properly, it mentioned I would bring that item back to that table in a fall. And this is why Jeff had wisely kind of taken that one.
What the letters- I think their letter said, if I recall, and I just read it on Friday, was that they would entertain striking a committee to review all of their funding partnerships with their communities within the county, something along those lines, and that they would review all these things again at this time, but when we approached them last year, they weren't prepared to move on anything. I love to be optimistic about it, I'm not.
Yeah, well, same here.
So I'm just, I've been trying to decide if we, how we address this function, if we address it at all going forward. I hope that we can look at this option four, but it's ACP grant money and it costs us $3,000 a year for the next three years. That's a deal.
That is definitely financially the most sustainable option, but I'm curious to see if they would be willing, along with this option, to come at a table with us.
Counselor Barnes?
I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to have the mayor or somebody from our council or on the ECT to go and talk with them about the benefits a little bit more than just sending a letter to them. And I realize you feel it's inappropriate for you to be the one, but maybe somebody, no, you're on the ECT and you're on the ECT. You're on the O-N?
I'm on the Rita of the Senate.
Oh, okay. So maybe it would be appropriate for Counselor Barfus to go and extol the virtues of this position to them and just to get a feel where they're coming from. Would you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I have a problem that I'm not opposed to that.
My one concern with that, though, is if they don't see the intrinsic value of it, internal value for their organization, then we're just going hat in hand and trying to pull them along with us.
I don't know that we're going hat in hand. It's a program that would benefit them. We have to look at it.
If they don't see that, there's not much agenda.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained. If nothing happens, then we come back and then we reassess where we're going from there.
Now, the one thing I was going to ask Counselor Bangor, if I might, is I sent something to Murray just saying, "Hey, remember this letter? Do you, as a council, want to send something saying, 'As per your letter dated this, we look forward to the results of your strut committee regarding shared services.'"
I think that would be-
Is that a little more formal bugging here?
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
In the sense that we are interested in seeing that, we can strike it on our own, but we can see the benefit for the region, striking it in partnership. So yes, I would view the wisdom in doing that. Is council agreeable to it, though?
I think it would be great to send a letter. Like I said, I have no problems if council wants me to go and approach them formally. My bias, actually, is more towards option three. There's one particular project that the Economic Development Committee's been kind of tugging along for the last year and a half, that I think has great potential for our area. Waiting till next spring to get some more movement behind that is another year wasted and I have concerns about that. I'd like to see us get some motion and some momentum going on this project. So I would like to see us get something going right away and the reality of it is, is that Jeff's supposed to have the time to drive that and we need somebody to drive that.
Okay. Was that in mind, Counselor Barfus, and not having a finance until January or December?
The budget, what did you mean?
Budget meeting.
The budget, not people.
Yeah, you can pass it till December. That's not to say there isn't something in this year, because, you know, I've got people coming and going.
Have you got some kind of an idea of what it would cost us to have our own ECT development?
Well, it's all set. It says $65,000 on a part-time basis.
On a part-time basis.
So that's all in, right?
That's travel, expenses, the whole shebang.
Benefits and all that stuff.
Benefits, office space, yeah, you name it, that's the whole work.
Counselor Barfus, I am not aware of what you're talking about. Could we strike a committee just to move that project along?
It's not something that needs a committee to move it. It needs somebody to drive it forward. That's where it's at.
Could we assign one individual that is a driving force?
Unless you've got somebody that's got 20 hours a week to do it, I don't think so. There's a significant time commitment to get all of everything put together to get things going.
Okay, Counselor Reed?
Just wondering, I mean, you know, I think I know what proposal you're talking about and I think it would be a good thing, but we all think economic development's a good idea in principle. What I'm wondering is, either for ourselves or for the county, if we actually have a, you know, a clear-cut job description of this position that we could use to move it forward with, you know, like we say, you know, economic development, but do we really have a clear job description of what that economic development officer would do? I mean, you seem to have some mind, because we have something written.
Yeah, basically, we don't have anybody in the administration right now that is doing what Jeff was doing. That's the biggest problem.
So it's on the back burner right now?
Well, we haven't had an economic development meeting for this year. That's the reality of it, is we don't have anybody to take care of all of that admin work and there's a lot.
But we do have a description, a job description?
Yeah, I probably have something put together pretty quick, yeah.
I'd just like to see what you have.
Because it was part of my previous position, right?
Right. I'm sure you know what it is. I just haven't, I mean, you've got some information in here about what a, you know, the economic officer would do, but I'm just wondering if we did, where-
Yeah, through the John's room study, he outlined a few of the key responsibilities, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one of those tricky questions that, over the history, as far as I know, the whole history, we've always put 100% of the cost of that initiative for the area. And the councils of the day, and this council, has always been good to extend a seat on that board to a county counselor and the county residents to make sure that it's collaborative. And I'm not saying that can't continue. It may, well, it can, but I don't think we're in a position to continue to cover those costs for the benefit of other jurisdictions all the time. And this seems like a pretty straightforward one to either do something solely for us or get a shared agreement.
Counselor Reed?
Yeah, just a heads up, this is very relevant and we're going to hear more about this in tomorrow's dinner, for those that are going. The Alberta Southwest Rita is looking at putting together a regional ECT dev officer collaboration. So they're talking about meeting either once a month or every other month and coordinating efforts for the region and also doing some training so that the, because lately, just in the region of Alberta Southwest, we've, I think they've called four, maybe five new ECT dev officers just within that region, all very new, all wondering what their job is entailing. And Bev, I think, is going to funnel a little bit of the Rita money into some of that training and would love participation from all of the other municipalities. In fact, in our last Alberta Southwest meeting, she said, "Go back, tell your municipalities, if you're thinking about designating an officer for economic development, do it quickly so that they can be part, they can be at the table during these discussions." So anyway, this is very timely.
Linda Erickson from Finance, well, it's not Finance and Enterprise, I don't know what department it works for anymore, but-
I have, I have education and-
Could be Education or something. Anyway, Linda's been doing that type of thing for a number of years. We meet quarterly with economic development practitioners in the region. Bev joins us for that. And so that is a good tool, for sure. So yeah, just want a little feel for that and maybe how we go forward.
I think Counselor Reed has a really good point in putting together a specific job description that's really specific about what that is, but in general terms, I feel really strongly that we need to move forward and then waiting for, in all honesty, waiting for the county to come along, we could be waiting for a long, long time. Instead of going hat in hand, I'd like to see us just say, "Let's go with it."
Counselor Barnes?
I agree with you. I represent. I think we need to move forward, too, but I'm thinking if we just say, "Well, look, we decide we're going to go on our own, if sometime down the road you decide you want to come on board, this is your cost."
Absolutely.
And leave it open for them to come on board and then that person could become a full-time position.
I don't think any single person that's involved in economic development has any dis-want of the county to be with us.
Oh, absolutely.
We would love for the county to participate with us on this. There hasn't seemed to be an interest in doing that.
Yeah.
And that's where my concern is at, is if we wait for that interest to finally manifest itself, we could be waiting for years.
So the recommendation that you put forward would be number three? I'd support that.
With the option of what they were going to do for number four, but-
But this is a .5 position.
This is a .7.
Well, to be determined. I'm throwing out some numbers.
And yeah, and-
Still a fairly decent pay to go.
Well-
Hannah?
Go ahead, Mayor.
If we were to go along with item .3, is there a place for the point of, for the ACP grant to kick in if we have that position?
After the fact?
After the fact.
I don't know. Yeah, I couldn't say with certainty without checking. I think we'd be okay, because we'd be proposing a regional economic development officer in the ACP grant. We'd be proposing a regional full-time position.
So could it be that if we go with number three, there'd be a clause, a condition, and if the ACP grant is available again, that we review that position, uphold it to that ACP?
I mean, we could just do a one-year contract or something and see how it goes.
It doesn't have to be a clause, it's just we decide that when it's available, let's-
If it's one year, it's one year.
Yeah.
And then it offers us still the possibility of having funding. So that's what I was trying to figure out. How can we improve our situation?
Yeah, we want to close the door on option four, if we can get it, right? That's our, I think that's our purpose.
So that's what I'm trying to, try to see if there is a possibility of doing it. One, to maybe serve the urgency of the matter, we have, you have a project, we had a project, and so maybe something like that might be useful. There are two projects that need to be moved forward.
Yes, yep, there is. I'm going to go out on a limb here. I'm just looking at the price tag here. I mean, I've been out on a limb before, so, but I'm just wondering, I understand, an ECT dev development officer position is a very important position and it takes a lot of expertise, and so the price tag for something like that is a little higher than most other, some of the other staff on board.
It should be.
And I guess, I'm just wondering if there wasn't somebody on staff already that couldn't work into some of this. Do we have any part-timers right now that could come on board to work with this?
I mean, we're doing some changes, because I have some transition in the office right now. I'm replacing two people, but we haven't factored this into that. It certainly could become part of the equation, potentially.
Sweet.
But that's just, I'm just going out there wondering.
No, I agree.
If that's a possibility.
My concern is, along with Counselor Barnes, is we've got some full-time staff in our office and we bring in a brand-new part-time staff and the comparison of salaries and stuff, it does not fit with me. It does not feel comfortable.
If I could, Counselor, I don't know what that salary looks like. This is pretty hypothetical still, I don't know what that looks like.
And even the cost that's there at $65,000, that's not $65,000 paid to that individual.
No.
That's mileage.
Program costs, probably the traveling.
Yeah, that's-
You take-
Costs, et cetera.
20% is benefits.
Yeah, 25% is benefits.
Benefits.
Yeah.
So, and then you take another good 5 or 10% that is travel and expenses, and then you have your raw salary, which does not amount to tons.
One thing to consider, you know, we haven't discussed it per se, but the, I hate to say that the quality of the person or the applicants might be a little different if you're offering part-time versus full-time.
Yeah.
And so if the idea is eventually you want to go full-time, you're going to be stuck with maybe this first choice when you could for the same money.
That's why you have a one-year contract.
Right.
And what I foresee more than that, Counselor Reed, is the part-time person isn't interested in the full-time work year later.
Right.
They want the part-time schedule. They were looking for a .5.
And then, there are a lot of people who want those part-time-
You know, something while the kids are at school or something like that.
My wife's a perfect example of that, where she was offered a full-time position and took a lower position to be part-time. Right. And did one full-time.
Your candidates are just totally different. The interesting thing about this position, and I've seen it in different variations since I've been with the town, you guys will recall that we had Ryan for a while, who was doing finance and helping with economic development. You know, that was some, he performed really well in that function simply because he had the direction from the committee and he had direction from me and he had the support and he could just devote time to it. He could put hours into it. It wasn't particularly complex. It wasn't anything he had to have particular, I mean, he had a lot of great skills, has a lot of great skills, don't get me wrong, but he didn't have to come with these specific ECT dev skills. They were just things that needed followed through on and needed time. And I'm there to direct the position, you know, and we participate with all these Rita's and all these resources, so, you know, I think there's somebody out there at a reasonable price that can just devote the time to it. Whether that translates into the full-time year down the road, I don't know. I really don't know, but I see it as just a temporary one-year contract and then you review it and see, but you could probably get a few things moving forward in that year if that's the direction we want to go. Or we wait and see if in the spring we can go with a full-time permanent for three years, which is what the ACP grant would be. You don't cover three years worth of the cost.
Well, Counselor Barfus, is there a chance?
I would love to see us move forward with a one-year contract. That doesn't mean we're hiring somebody next week, obviously. It means that they've got some work to do there, but, or rather, administration has some work to do.
So that's your recommendation?
But that is my recommendation.
And you're talking for the fall?
I'm talking ASAP.
ASAP.
Like I said, economic development has been on hold for eight months.
Right.
We need to get things going.
So essentially, what we need to know is which ways you have still some money available in that-
Yeah, I may have, I'll have to look at that to be sure. I don't know exactly.
Because are we talking about two or three months for this year?
Yeah, it's not a lot that I'd need to-
So for this year, you would-
You get started.
Yeah.
We get the right person.
Get the process going, anyway. I can bring back an analysis of what the impact on budget is and if we have the money with the job description and then we can go from there. If not-
Yeah.
That's an important analysis.
I think that would be a recommendation that should be done.
That's exactly what I'd like to see before.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a recommendation.
For administration to get-
Yeah, to read this and bring it back to us.
What's the impact of that position and job description?
All in favor of that recommendation? Okay. Okay, item, item 8E. This is a request that I think, it doesn't need to be discussed, but I think that the administration is going to hit with the mayor and they're going to, it's an invite for the mayor.
No, that's later on here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's all part of the same package.
Exactly. So I would request that we just move on and let the mayor and administration handle this situation, 8E and the 9 or 10G.
Counselor, if I could?
Yes.
I would like some direction on 8E, which is spending money in this program.
Okay. It's not so much money there is to convert late 37 housing. You know how people use little ads to congratulate? That is a 30th year anniversary. Jeff and I are invited to go there. I've been invited to speak to that, to that event, and so what I'm trying to do is make sure that all the communities that are supporting, that have 37 housing in their town, to support the event in some way or another.
Isn't that during our AMV?
Yeah, well, it's on a Monday. So in other words, the ad can be as an eight, a six, another page, $150 is the minimum, I think, if I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we have 37 housing in our town and so it's just a way to acknowledge a successful program, I suppose.
But it's not a commitment to that.
No, no.
That's an advertisement.
No, effectively, they're actually selling it to us here as an advertising space in their publication.
Right. It's a congratulation for a 37 30th anniversary on it from the donor.
I have no problems with an amount. The amount, I would say probably is $250.
From the donation fund.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I was thinking $250 to-
And we have that in the funds?
Yeah, there is money.
Okay, recommendation from Counselor Barfus.
Recommend this one to council and I'll bring you back.
Okay. So we'll make a recommendation to council that we donate or purchase advertising of their location, their publication for $250.
To come from the donation-
To come from the donation fund.
Who made up the-
No.
It's not, they take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, well, there is a format.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Gary?
It'll be full color and flashy.
Whatever calorie does, double it.
We'll cap it $250, remember?
$250.
It's only going to be an inch square then, but it'll be flashy.
All right, all right, counsel, let's move on. You, Jeff passed us off a letter we received. We need to review that. We brought it on the agenda as a tree. Now you know where the tree is located. Jeff, can you give us a background on this?
Yeah, I wasn't going to bring this to council, but I thought, I want a little input here. It just so happened, the mayor was actually in the office one day when Mr. Lowery came in. I had never met him, I've only met him once, but he expressed to me that there was this tree that was potentially going to fall on the power lines down at his house and that it was rotten and it needed to come down. So I suggested he have it removed because it's on his property. It's not a boulevard tree, it's distinctly on his property. I went down and looked at this tree and it's some monster. I mean, it's a mess of a tree and it is huge and it's well beyond the- And it's well beyond the scope of the layperson just to go and take the chainsaw to it and pull it down. It's right between the power lines and the home. And, and it's much taller than we can trim down with our machines. So it's about fifteen feet taller than our bucket truck. And so we don't have the opportunity to even go in and try and knock it down. So, as you read in, this was the email I got from, from Mr. Lowery yesterday. But what I told him when he came to the counter that day is I said, "Look, generally, this, this is a tree on your property. I don't understand why we wouldn't necessarily get involved." But he said, "Well, the reason it's dying is because it was improperly pruned out of the lines over all these years. That the electricians over time have just come in and hacked away at it and it's caused it an early death." His suggestion is that's evidenced by looking at the trees right across the street. That aren't, the, the lines aren't on that side and they're, they're healthy and growing well. So what I told him is I said, "Look," and the mayor may recall, "I asked if you'd be willing to cover any of the costs, to share anything if, if we were to entertain anything at all." To which he said he probably would. And that's manifested in his email to me yesterday as well. I've emailed back and forth with him two or three times and he seems a bit of a litigious sort. And again, I don't know him well enough to say one way or another. And I don't think we'll get to that. Everything's still amicable. But I asked two different arborists to go give me a quote to take it down. But I also asked them, and I didn't give them any of the backstory, to just give me their feel for why the tree was in the condition it was. I didn't explain to them that he thought it was the lines. I didn't explain to them that we didn't wanna pay for it. I, I just said, "While you're down there, give me a thought." So their thoughts, the one said, "It simply age. It's just old." And it's got to that point. The other arborist said, "Well, there's a lot of bark missing from the trunk area, which causes the bone to rot out." And he couldn't say what caused that. Mr. Lowery has a whole bunch more context to why that might be. And I don't disagree with anything he's saying. I can't. I have no grounds to say whether any of that's true or not. But he has a lot more context into the life of that good old tree. And that he maintains that it is the pruning and that, that we have, we have contributed to its, to its condition. What I copied for you is the very back page you have with some orange. And they're just excerpts out of the act that if push came to shove, the act protects the municipality.
That, what?
The act protects the municipality.
Okay.
At, at the end of the day, we're not going to be liable because somebody's tree is rotten. My opinion is simple as that. We just wouldn't be. It's one, it's not on our property. It's not something we're in charge of maintaining. We have no obligation to do any of this. I just, I want that to be very clear. However, complicating matters is a very strange, but by law or policy that I also included. It says, "The town will assist citizens in removal of cotton-bearing trees at the town's convenience during the fall and winter and replace them with an eight-foot non-cotton-bearing poplar green asterosinsudable tree." First of all, we're bringing this back to be rescinded very soon, but we'll talk about that later. But it's a very interesting policy. I understand why it is. I, I get it. Because we've had these cotton issues and people have health issues associated. I'm very surprised we would volunteer to replace the tree. And we have other people in town that know of this policy. In fact, there was a post that noted on my policy saying, "So-and-so wants six trees removed this winter around their property." Because they know the policy.
Can, can I ask you something?
It's up to the check.
Oh, sorry, of course. In that case, is a tree a cotton tree?
Yes.
It's a cotton one.
Yeah, it is nail. It's one of those, probably one of those early, early natural trees you find all through the creek valley.
Right.
You know, it's a huge, huge tree. So what I offer back to Mr. Lowery is you saw, in my email, I said, "I got two quotes." And if, so what the arborist said is, I had two quotes. One of them, I'm sorry, I forgot to attach here, but it was twenty-three hundred and one was twenty-five hundred. And they both said, "If you guys will clear it away, we can knock probably seven hundred dollars off the quote." Like, if we just have to fell the thing, but not clean it up and cut it up and chip it and take it away, we can knock about seven hundred off. Both of them said, "We would have to go in and clear all the branches at least ten feet away from the lines." You know, to get, get them in a safe distance from the lines, which is reasonable. So what I proposed to Mr. Lowery was, "We'll go in and, and clear the lines." And we could potentially throw, I said, "A few hundred dollars at it" if we want to consider we had some impact over the last eighty years in the health of the tree. But at the end of the day, it's your tree. And then I got that. Which again, provides a whole bunch of context to the story that I didn't know and I appreciate. But his, his proposal is, "Well, I'll throw a thousand bucks at it. You guys cut it out of the lines and you guys clean it up." So it only leaves seven hundred bucks cash on the table. It doesn't offend me. I asked Leonard, I said, "So what if that tree comes down and falls on the lines?" You know, it's a huge tree. It'll take the whole thing down. Well, we have a couple of options. One is we just go and fix it. You know, we go repair, we cut the tree apart and we repair the lines. Or we do all that and then bill the homeowner all the cost of repairing the lines. You know, because we may have some grounds to say that was his tree.
His negligence.
You know, it's, it's not our, our tree. And I realize it's not Mr. Lowery's tree. It was there long before his parents were a twinkle in their parents' eye. It's been there for a hundred years. So you can't point the finger at the current homeowner and say, "That's your tree. Deal with it." So it, it just brings up a couple of issues here. One is this policy that I'm terribly uncomfortable with. I, I don't like it at all. It doesn't also define what assist means, that the town will assist citizens. Is that a pat on the back and tell them, "Well, you did a great job"?
Moral support?
Yeah, hand them the pruner. You know, that's very vague and very dangerous for us to have that policy. So I'll be bringing, once this is all sorted, I'll bring that back to get rid of it. But we, in Mr. Lowery's proposal, we'd be up for seven hundred cash. Also, the linemen's time to prune out of their lines, which either way has to happen. And I think it's only reasonable that our guys would do that. And, but also it would be the removal and cutting up of the tree. So I, I talked to Leonard about that today as well. And he said, "Look, in the winter, we've got the chipper that we can deal with the small stuff and we can haul everything else, throw everything else on a tandem and haul it out down in the pit." It would probably take our guys a full day, a couple guys, to, to cut it up and chip it up and haul it away. I'm not really sure where to go. There's a part of me that wants to just, there's a principal piece here that says, "Hey, you know what? My offer's off the table. It's your tree. If it comes down on the lines, we're sending you the bill for all of the damage." 'Cause that'll far exceed twenty-five hundred bucks. You know, to replace great big, brand-new poles and lines and transformers and everything else. But at the same time, I have a policy on the books that said, "I will assist citizens in removal of those trees."
Right. Okay, so council, where do you want the administration to go?
Yeah, I think with any policy, there's an assumption that there's going to be a limit to the budget of the policy. And I don't know, I mean, not having, not having recognized this previous, this year, it might be prudent for us to just say, "Hey, we're gonna put, you know, let's say, seven hundred dollars budget to solving these kinds of problems." And what it's done, it's done for this fiscal year, apply again next year type thing. And hopefully it'll get funded next year. Or it won't be there. But, but I think that kinda addresses the fact that we have a policy, we're gonna stick to it, we're gonna be responsible to it. It might actually help on this particular issue. And then it kinda saves us from having to do it with everybody else as well. We're just saying, "Hey, here's, here's a budget for that policy. And when that money's gone, it's gone for this year."
Yeah.
So.
You know, we, we have other trees. We removed three up here. We were doing a little subdivision and there was three trees. You know, we got a guy like Mario who's real handy with a chainsaw. And one afternoon, he had them all down, felled, cut up, and they were gone. But there was nothing around them. He just cut them, they fell down, chopped them up, they threw it on the truck and it was gone. I fully sympathize with Mr. Lowery here. This thing is huge and gnarly and in a terribly delicate spot.
Yeah.
It's difficult. And these guys gotta bring in a picker truck and cut a piece and pull it up and out of the way, you know, and over the garage and shed and power lines. It's precarious at best.
It's possible that it's rotten all the way up.
Well, and it's very rotten at the base. In fact, the wasp has moved into it.
Okay.
You know, it's, yeah, it's, it's a bad tree. It's not in good shape.
I think this policy, unfortunately, because it is there, ties our hands. And there is no limitation, as you said, as to what the budget will bear. I think if you can come with some reasonable amount of money, I don't know that seven hundred dollar on our part is really assisting. Because it, it represents a serious chunk of the whole that still represent one-third or better.
Well, plus we have all the labor and man-hours and machinery hauling.
So my point of view is, we should not exceed fifty percent of the whole, of the cost.
Yeah.
I think.
And, and our fifty percent would include the man-hour, man-hour too.
Yeah.
Couple guys for a full day or something.
I think assisting shouldn't be beyond fifty percent.
Yeah.
Which at this time, if you look at this.
Yeah, the cost is twenty-five hundred dollars and he's chipping in a thousand.
Yeah, no, my point of view, let's be assisting. Assisting means that it's a lesser of the effort or of the outlet of money. So forty percent is more assisting. Fifty percent is cost-sharing.
Fifty percent of partner.
Yeah, partner, exactly. So, my point of view, if we go to fifty percent and get rid of this policy in a hurry and redraft it so that it makes sense from a budget point of view, then would be okay.
I know what makes sense to me, is that it's-
Yeah.
Are there other discussions?
Right now, we have to honor it, but I would say no more than fifty percent.
I, I think I agree with what's been said. I think we have a, the policy's kind of there. We kind of have an obligation to do something within what we can justify within that policy, as vague as it is.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of saying that the total cost is twenty-five hundred bucks, including our in-kind. We're not on the hook for more than fifty percent of it.
Exactly.
I think that's a great place to draw the line.
Any other discussion? Mayor Corwin, I'll, I'll look for a recommendation.
Okay, I will make a recommendation to council that the cost-bearing of telling the tree to the town be no more than fifty percent of the total cost, including labor.
And that the total amount of tree policy budget not exceed-
Well, why don't I just, why don't I just bring this back?
Yeah, it will have to kind of give us the detail.
I always hate to change a policy mid-
Mid-issue?
Mid-discuss. There's somebody, I think that one's bad.
We have to be careful.
I put this to bed and I'll bring it back.
Right now, I think we're kinda, kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place.
We have a recommendation. Can I, uh? All in favor? Pass. Thank you. Okay, questions? There's no questions at this point in time that I, that I saw or learned of. Correspondents, Alberta Culture Tourism, invitation to host seniors, senior summer games. We talked about hosting summer games before. Do we feel as a, as a, as a community, we could do the seniors games?
I think there's a key point even in the invitation there. It says, um, ten thou- They talked about a population of ten thousand people to do it. We're not there. I don't think there's anything to discuss.
Any other discussion? Uh, just to back that up, the eleven hundred to eighteen hundred would be hard to house in the hotel structure, okay?
In a hundred rooms.
No, you couldn't do that.
You think?
Okay, move on. Alberta Municipal Affairs and Notice of the Gast Act Fund Allocation.
Just to let us know that the money's coming.
Exactly. Okay. Community Futures, invitation to participate in the Prairie Futures Simulation.
Now, that's quite interesting.
This is the same one that we had signed up before that was canceled, right? So I, I think this is fantastic and I'm very interested in it, absolutely.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, who is all interested in this?
When is it?
I think it's October.
It's an all-in-one.
It's early in October. Still coming up.
Yeah, the other seven days. I'm interested in it.
Yeah, this one is-
Maybe the whole council should take a serious look at it.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss it to-
Timing is right.
Next council meeting?
It's good.
Yeah, I'll get some dates.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay. Invitation for cocktail, cocktail reception at the AUMA. I think that's the-
Just for your information.
Good desserts.
The desserts are big.
It's, it's the night of our dinner. Van Horn Institute, invitation to the symposium. Have you read that one?
Do you have any idea what the costs are on that one?
No, we don't.
That's everything we got there, council?
I did see it.
That would be interesting to attending that.
Want me to check that out then?
If you could. Because what OLS has done has been very beneficial for their community.
It's been remarkable.
And we have the advantage is that we own all our homes.
Yes.
So we would not have to pay rent to put cables on them.
Right.
So I think it's something that's worthwhile looking into. And it's also brought businesses into their community.
Yes, it did.
So if you bring back some things on that?
Yeah.
Okay, youth range day is twenty-fifteen. It's a thank you for donation. And I think it was, what, three or five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars.
We, we done five hundred, yeah.
And I, we, we spoke, I spoke to, to the correspondents in ten G. I will leave that to the mayor and to Jeff. Because that is a, it's a situation where they're going to, they're gonna make a presentation. The mayor is gonna do a, do a, she's been asked to talk this. And it, they will critique something for it. Is that all right, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Any confidential items?
No.
Yeah. Okay, then I got one more question. Councilor Barfus?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. All in favor?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the, the press and the, and the television and Jill, thank you for supper.
You got time for me, Jeff?
Yeah, you bet.